Thank you and welcome, thank you for coming. As a board, I'd like to recognize one of our town council members, Andy West. Oh, stop it, Andy. And we have a candidate for the town council with us in Barbara Alexander. Thank you. Coach Ed?
I said, "Thank you."
You're very welcome, thank you for coming. So, welcome all to the first presentation night of the budget season. And I would ask that, seeing as these are presentations tonight and next Wednesday night are presentations, if you have any clarifying questions, that would be okay. Or questions of just some information so you understand the presentation, that would be fine to ask for all of us. But let's not have any philosophical debates about whether or not we should be doing something at these meetings. After the two presentation nights, we'll do that. Okay? I suggest that you write down questions and I haven't checked this out with you yet, Dr. Brown, but as far as questions from our community, you would probably like them in writing ahead of time.
If we can, sure.
Very helpful. Okay. Thank you very much. And with, oh, before we go any further, I just want to clarify for everybody here at the table, our next meeting dates. So, you might have to help us too with that a little bit, Dr. Brown. So, our next meeting is going to be next Wednesday night. And is that really going to be five o'clock for the audit presentation?
Uh, this is five o'clock. Five o'clock for the budget presentations? And then the audit is part of the business meeting?
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was probably...
So, on March 4th, we're at five?
Yes. March 4th, we're at five. I knew a policy meeting that night.
I knew there was a know-something meeting, so...
All right. Okay, so then on your calendars, you should have March 11th, six to eight. And then March 18th. And then we're presenting to the town council on April 13th.
Is the 18th at six, Jim?
Um, I don't know. Andy, are your budget meetings at six?
I believe we're trying so early.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, probably.
That's on the 13th. The 18th, though, is...
The April 13th is at six.
And then March 18th is at our regular time line? Thought it would be helpful if I was just home, sitting at home, watching the TV and miss a meeting. I was just...
We call you. Yeah. I wouldn't make... No. Okay. I would recommend to the school committee folks that you number your pages in some of the first sets of presentations because if you take them out of here so that you can look at them properly and the wind blows, you're never going to get them back in the right order. So, that's what I hope that helps me out. So, I'll just let it pass then. With no further ado, Superintendent Brown.
Thank you. Remember you move. And if anyone wants to move so they can see the screen, please feel free to go. And a couple of housekeeping things to get started. The first is that when you put a budget together, and the school committee's heard me say this before, being a superintendent, it's really like being an office director. You just move your arms and everybody else makes the music. And by that, I mean that all the people sitting in the audience have done the heavy lifting tonight to bring the budget to you. And some of the folks that aren't here but who really put in a lot of time are the people in my office. And that meant preparing for the numbers, putting information into ADS, helping with the presentations. So, I get to stand here and give it, but I want you to understand that there was a lot of work that went into the documents that you have. So, first of all, last year, I introduced you folks to the concept of a budget binder. It was different and I think worked pretty well. This year, we're trying to refine that again. All of the school committee members have their own binder. We have guest binders, so as to rest, if you'd like to borrow one, feel free to come in and take a look at it. We have one through the association, so your binder is there as well. One for the all of the administrators and then one for the school board. So, the binder is organized by article and then within some of the articles are buildings. So, for example, in Article 1, you'll find the grade school, the middle school, and the high school, and their individual budgets. So, you have a chance to see what has been agreed to and now prepared to be recommended to you. So, today, with the okay of the chair, I prepared a press release and sent it to our media outlets that cover Winthrop. And I did that as a way to improve what I consider to be one of my functions, which is transparency around numbers. When I came to Winthrop, there was a lot of discussion around figures and numbers and I wanted to get out ahead of that this year. So, when the chairman said, "Okay," we sent out a press release that went out this morning and it basically contains a snapshot of the information that we'll get tonight. So, that has gone out. The other thing that I just want to remind everybody about is tonight, we have following the district overview, which I will go through in just a moment, presentations by the individual buildings, special ed, adult ed, and curriculum and instruction. They'll laugh when I tell them this, but eight minutes, right? I don't have to time it this year. Mr. Ladd, can you go over last year? But we want to make sure that we use this opportunity as a chance to teach you because they have been asked to teach you about their budgets. Because at heart, we're all teachers. So, if you have time after they're down to school nutrition, athletics, technology, and the school committee and administration, those are two accounts, two articles that I'm responsible for. So, with that, everybody ready to go? So, let's see, my techno... Even though I'm the director of technology, I have woefully bad at technology skills. So, we'll see how much I go here. So, one of the most important reasons that we put together a budget is to support the mission of the district. And here, your mission is, your core values, develop and foster collaborative partnerships to build relationships and essential skills, empowering every individual to contribute to their communities and live a life of purpose. Some of you in the audience remember writing this mission. It was last fall. We brought together a multi-stakeholder group of people, including students and town councilors. And this is where we want to go. This is quickly followed by your vision. This vision was adopted by the Winthrop School Committee. The power of ideas changes attitudes, lives, and ultimately, the world. Acknowledging this, Winthrop Public Schools will provide every graduate, not some, not a few, but everyone with relevant skills to achieve success in college career and life in a dynamic world. That's our promise to kids in Winthrop. So, I also took a look at the school committee goals. They were fairly straightforward this year. Remember my way, Erin? So, it was hired new superintendent, check that box. Mr. Hodgkin was hired. He will be starting July 1st, so accomplished. A functioning architectural and engineering summary. I've tried to keep everybody in that loop. CHA Architects was hired from a very competitive field back in October. Some folks here, Andy and Jeff, are part of that committee. Thank you very much. Got that off on the right step. They did one community forum in January. They'll be back again with their findings in April. First for the school committee, April 1st, followed by a second community forum, April 8th. Negotiate two contracts. One has been settled. We're working on the other one. And make sure that as the state does a glide path, as a former lobbyist, a glide path is a stepped process to get to an end. The $40,000 teacher salary, which goes into effect, I guess it should wait two years from now, is that right? This year, one more.
Stuff coming here. This is start of the path.
Thank you. So, those were the goals for the school committee. So, I love this. I have learned what elephant toothpaste is. So, I'm going to pick on Mr. Ladd.
Forget the past.
What is ele... I don't know what elephant toothpaste is. Does anybody know? Mr. Weber's class is making elephant toothpaste. We thought that was a really cool thing.
Oh, cool.
So, you know, one of the priorities, and you'll see this in a later slide, is Winthrop is a very high-performing school district. It really has everything going for it. It has the arts, it has athletics, it has a deep and comprehensive program at the high school. So, when we started putting the budget together, we want to maintain all of this. It's not everywhere that you can make elephant toothpaste. So, these were some of our priorities. We want to maintain existing programs. We want to keep low student-staff ratios. You have envious student-staff ratios from some of the surrounding communities. We want to maintain that. We want to maintain a comprehensive academic and athletic program. We want to make the school nutrition program sustainable. Some of these are goals that carried over from last year. Erin has worked really hard to make the school nutrition program locally sourced, introduce kids to things that they might not try, and at the same time, we're going to make it cost-effective. So, let's see, here we go. This, I love this. Let's see, here we go. So, those are our girls, Class C self-champs. And then, let's see, here's my... There are our boys. So, as you can see, our athletes are something that we find and we celebrate here. So, as I said, a high-performing district, we want low-class student sizes, contracts, a coordinated district technology team. The superintendent is also the director of technology. I mentioned that a minute ago. And one of the things that I'm going to advocate fairly vigorously, the auditors' account they're going to as well, and that is a full-time bookkeeping position added to central office. So, this one, let's see, I make this one go. Arts. This is one of our arts classes at the grade school. See how they're still dry? See if you can make those. Yes, it is. Keep painting. Put it this on. Yeah, go up to the window, see what it looks like. Look, it almost looks like it's glowing. The light is shining through. Yeah, go check it out. Go see what it looks like. It's a little bit translucent. The sun's down. Isn't that crazy? Aren't the arts wonderful? They really make us human. I love, love that. Okay, so now we get into the nuts and bolts. I have proposed a $12,409,930 operating budget. This is 2% over the current budget. And so, to give you a sense of where the money goes, Articles 1 to 11 is an increase of $251,772. Article 14, I'll spend some time talking about this. Article 14 is the SNP article, School of Nutrition. Last year, we increased the local appropriation to $150,000. I'm recommending that we go to $200,000 now. And the reason is as follows. SNP is an enterprise account. And what that means is, it's like running a small business. You have revenue coming in in the form of sales. We have revenue coming in in the form of federally funded grants. And we have revenue coming in in the form of district contribution. You also have expenditures. On the expenditure side, which is in your book, it's roughly a half million dollars to run that business. It would be irresponsible of me, as the business manager for the organization, to say you can do it for less than that or to budget for less than that that costs that much to run. That's been done before here. And I don't recommend you continue doing it. Ultimately, as the policymakers, you'll make that decision. But I can tell you, it costs that much to run the program. So, that will be included. Here are your revenues. In the back of the budget books is the EDU 279. That is the document from the state that explains how we get our general purpose aid. We are up 67,375. I don't have time tonight to go into an explanation of how you get there, but just suffice to know that the mill rate has dropped and the state has put more money into education. You take those two factors, it's blunting some of the challenges that we have here. And among those challenges will be a dropping pre-reduced population, a dropping student count, and these are all weighted counts and dropping ELL numbers and special ed. So, as you go through, I think we did much better than I thought we were going to do, quite honestly. I've included a reduction in tuition. We have a decreased number of students at the high school. Primarily, those students come from Fayette. You'll need one or two to not come, and that really impacts your tuition lines. So, that's why we have a decrease in tuition. I had included a revenue for E-rate. That's a new one. I'm working with a person here in Winthrop to help us get E-rate money again. And this is just as a sidebar. One of the challenges, I think, in the superintendent's office is that you don't have, in my opinion, adequate staffing to sometimes supervise things like technology and get the revenues that you shouldn't have for that. So, you've been without E-rate money for the last two or three years. I'd have to look, in my opinion, because you have not had a director who's really driving that. May care, Lori can touch on that when she speaks to special education. Gate receipts, that's what we take in at games. And miscellaneous revenue escapes that we collect that we didn't anticipate. Sometimes we bill for special ed services, sometimes we bill for transportation if we should have rides. That's where that comes. So, we're up in the revenue department just over $52,000. So, this is a pretty cool thing. This is chemistry class, rainbow long-term challenge, one of the hands-on activities that happens at Winthrop High School. So, this is the local appropriation, $7,171,740. It's a 3%, 3.6% increase right now. One of the reasons is because I've requested more money for the SNP program. That bumps that bottom line. So, here are our district stats, and I found this quite useful to share with people. Winthrop grade school, middle school, high school, the number of kids, the number of techs, the number of guidance people, and the number of secretaries. We refer to that later on. One of the things I want to bring to your attention, and the administrators and I worked really hard to help incorporate, 80% of the budget is tied up in personnel. That's appropriate. We're a personnel business. That's the way it should be. And of the increase, salaries and benefits total $382,000 and change. Those are negotiated contracts. I have estimated, and it's actually 9.8, but I rounded to 10, increase for health insurance premiums. We'll get our premium rate in April, sometime mid-April-ish. I am very conservative when it comes to estimating cost. And so, I'd rather estimate high and be able to take money out as opposed to estimating too low and say, "No, we've got to cover a deficit in health insurance." So, those two together, 382, 871. So, notable increases, as you go through the budget, you heard me say at the last school committee meeting that the grade school is down to about 10% of the oil for this year. That needs to be addressed. I could do the irresponsible thing and ignore it, but that's not me. So, I've recommended increasing oil. We're going to have a new cleaning contract. The FMS contract is up as of June 30. It's a three-year contract. I've estimated 5%. That may be low. This is impacted pretty dramatically by the cost of minimum wage and the ability to find people. Those two together are going to put pressure on that contract, and I think that, that may go up. We have a new truck. We've increased the substitute rate. I don't know if you've been following the papers about subs, but they are really hard to find. I am recommending that we go from 85 to 90 for the daily rate. That's a 5% increase. Our long-term rate is tied to Bachelor's 1 of the teacher's contract, so it's around 185 right now. That's pretty competitive. It's this short-term rate where we need to help. And the bus bid, I'm estimating a 5% increase. The bus bids went out earlier this week. They were reviewed by the Department of Education, got their blessing, out they went. We sent them to a half a dozen different vendors, and they are due back April 30. So, mostly, it'll be a public bid opening, if any of you want to come, my office, 3:00. Or it's 2:00, plenty of... We'll get the date for sure. The date is April 30. The time may not be 3:00. But it's in the bid documents. So, come one, come all, we're going to open a bus bid. Here is the operating budget over time. This is not all that easy to see, but it's in the packet. I will put the slides on the website for people who'd like to see at home. This, quite honestly, is my favorite slide of all, other than this stuff, because this makes it crystal clear where the money goes. This is a side-by-side comparison, and it looks at what was approved, what is being requested, and the difference. And you can just run your eyes down and figure out where all the money goes. It's a very quick reference. In the budget, I have proposed new positions. One is a third-grade teacher at the grade school. This is to ameliorate class size. And I want to make sure when people look at the figures, those are salaries and benefits. It's not just salaries. Sometimes people look at that and go, "We're paying 72," and we're not. That's a salary and a benefit package. I'm a technology coordinator. In my memo today to the press, I wrote that we are going to streamline technology. So, take you back to technology a year ago. We had ed techs in each of the buildings. We have a district-wide ed tech, and then we had an extra person at the high school, .25 mark. Well, if you recall, everybody quit in August. And short of having a stroke, I said, "We need somebody quickly." And we were very lucky to hire CR Communications, a local vendor, and they really saved us. Through the course of this year, it has come to my attention from staff and others that we really need our own people. And I'm recommending a coordinator. That person would not be under the teacher contract. They wouldn't be an administrator. They'd have to work some extra days, but their job is to really work under the technology coordinator, the superintendent, and be a coordinator and direct a computer technician who's right under that as a, what I'm calling, a strike force. They would be housed in the grade school. Jeff and I have talked about where exactly that would go. We haven't really landed on a place yet because they need space. And so, preferably tables or counters where they can bring new equipment in, they can harvest. That still sounds weird to me, harvest computers, but... And then repurpose. And then if they need to all go to the middle school because it's MLTI time and they've all got to get imaged and out, then they go to the MLTI. If they've got to go to the grade school for the rea testing, then they all go to the grade school for the rea testing. So, it's that vision that I have, and I would develop a job description for both of those later in the process. Bookkeeper. One of the things that the auditors will share with you is that we need another layer between accounts payable level and the business office. As you know, I'm also the business manager for the district. I'm not an accountant. And I think you need somebody who has an accounting background or at least some training to help work in the bookkeeping office. We have fabulous people, but we don't have enough of them, for starters. So, that's that. We are making the high school art position full-time. That's increasing at .25. Art is one of our most popular electives at the high school. The classes are full. She's a wonderful teacher, and I think we need to increase and up that. So, there's that. And then there's always the flip side. So, here are the reductions. I recommend that we reduce three ed tech positions. One of those is currently vacant, has been vacant all year. And two others are currently either at the, where's Lori, middle school? One is at the middle school. But it's hard for me to say exactly because special education is one of the populations that's fluid. We have kids that move in, we have kids that transition, we have kids that move out. So, it's hard to say exactly what buildings those positions will come from. One maintenance person, this was a really difficult decision for the, for the school administration and for me. We were working really hard to bring the tax increase in. Some of you remember last summer and the council meetings and the parents and the people who came to those who were not really pleased with the way the tax rate was going out there in Winthrop. And I don't want to misspeak for you, but you were part of that too. And if you recall, the budget failed the first time out. And then it passed in August. But if there was a central theme, it was the community did not like the tax increase that was being proposed. So, we worked hard to see where we might find some streamlining, and that was one of the areas that we found. The FTE accounts payable position, if the school committee agrees with my recommendation to hire a full-time bookkeeper, then the FTE for accounts payable goes away. The building technology ed techs, remember I talked just a minute ago about what we had when we started the year? And remember, we're comparing a budget that was approved with a budget that's requested. So, those are the positions that are in the current budget. And then one district-wide ed tech. And this slide is hard to see, but Jimmy has talked about this already. This is our budget process, starting off with presentations tonight with a district overview, followed by individual buildings, and then if we have some time, some individual departments. And I feel like I really zoomed through that, but it's intentionally. I know that I want to make sure that the administrators have at least their full 80 minutes to give each of their presentations. But I will stop and ask if the school committee has any questions for me at this point.
You estimated about 10% for health insurance increase. What is that span that the health insurance people have? How high could it be? At one time, it could go up as high as like a 15% increase.
I don't know what you've been told before, so I am relying on what I've heard from other superintendents. And I think that your example is correct, that it can go that high. If you have a, a bad year in terms of your log rate, then you can expect your rating to go up. Last year, Winthrop's was 7%. We budgeted 10, and then when we got the premium increases, it was 7. So, 10, I think, is a pretty solid number. We haven't had, I don't think, kind of claims that would drive it to 50. Thank you. Jan?
Do we get a question from middle school kids from Fayette, too?
Yep.
I think I know whenever they move, but I didn't know, is maybe at AA?
Yes.
But some come here to middle school or...
They do. We don't have any kids right now, do we Karen?
I have one.
You have one, that's right.
And one moved.
Right.
And one moved.
So, we have one.
The fifth grade last year had three students.
Yeah. Krista?
I don't know if this is going to be covered at some other point in the presentation, so if it is, I can wait. But with the reduction of the full-time maintenance position, what is that, that department going to look like next year?
It will be comparable to the proposal for technology. And the superintendent is also the facilities and grounds director and would be the person directing, well, here's some of it, as well as the integrated pest manager. And so, that person would direct those two. One of the things that I have suggested, I met with maintenance folks today, is that I really would like to see what their schedule is sort of on a daily, what they do hour by hour. The principals have collected some of that data, but I'd like to see from them how they're spending their time. Any questions?
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will sit. And I do want to say, congratulations on getting the bus, the bus thing through the state, so. They were approved by the state.
Great. They were extraordinarily helpful. I worked with Pat Hinckley, I have known Pat for a long time. Very gracious with their time. Really appreciate that. Really appreciate that.
Okay, so, Mr. Lad, you're up.
I'll set the timer.
I think this is a little bit, passes.
Are you using that?
No. No, I'm bad because I run the risk of going over too long. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure I shimmy in well into my next sentence. Is there enough of those to go around? I want to see if there's one that doesn't, didn't get one the other day. Should I start it now?
No, you can't start it now.
I'll be more. Okay, uh, with the grade school, I'm, I have a very brief overview that I'm gonna go over with you right now. Uh, I'll take you down into just a little bit of detail, but most of the detail you'll find in your budget book. You'll go to the tab that says WGS on it, and you can find all of the various line numbers, um, and, uh, dig into any of the details that you want. So the, the top page, I have two reasons for that. One is I always wanted to do a pictogram. And I knew it probably was possible in Excel, so I said, no, let's try a pictogram. And it worked, so anyway. So this is just an important thing to keep in mind when you start talking about budgets and you're comparing buildings and you're looking across. And it, it's a good reminder for me as well, just how many kids we have on this site. Um, so this is a representation of our current enrollment. Um, and if you take the middle school and the high school, you could put them into the same, uh, footprint of the population of staff for the grade school. So it's just an important thing to keep in mind. Uh, when you start looking at numbers, you can't really compare across the buildings. On those bottom line numbers, you'd have to really start breaking it down to per student costs, um, which doesn't really work very well because it's more expensive to educate a high school student than it is a grade school student. Um, but just keep that in mind as you're looking at the budget. That we have a big group. Speaking of that, on the next page, I just did a projection of what I'm expecting for students next year. Um, it's a little bit lower than my projection was. I, just for the heck of it, I went on my computer and, I have it right here. I looked at the presentation that I did almost exactly a year ago, um, end of February, and looked at my projected numbers. My projected numbers a year ago for this current year, um, were 439 total. Um, and so my projection for this year is 424. However, currently, it, in the grade school right now, we have 447, I believe, is our total. Um, and when I look at my projections from last year compared to what we actually have in the seats this year, um, I'm, my biggest population changes are in first and second grade, K1, 2. Those are, that's the real volatile area where we have lots of kids that seem to move in, um, over the course of the summer and throughout the year. And when you look at my class sizes, you can see right now my projection, um, for kindergarten and grade one, those are at 14 per classroom with four teachers. Um, however, on my projections I picked up last year, um, I picked up 10 first grade students. So even though I was projecting at this point in the year, I was, I was looking at 14 and 15 in a classroom, I ended up stretching into 16, 17. So I need a little bit more wiggle room than what this looks like, um, typically, um, each year. But this would give me four classroom, four teachers for each grade level, except for preschool. We have just three preschool classrooms. And we have 16 students are up, we can have up to 16 students in each preschool. Um, this year, we're at 40 instead of the expected 48. We don't have quite as many preschoolers. However, the registration, we're already on a waiting list for next year's preschool. So preschool's going to be back up again next year, um, it would appear. So, so that will give you just sort of my projections at this point. It's very difficult to project. We haven't done kindergarten screening yet, um, what those numbers are going to look like, particularly at those younger grade levels. If you take a quick look at the next page, you'll see a pie graph overview of the, essentially the number, budget numbers that I submit in my budget. Um, Article 1 is the regular instruction, that's 39%. Um, Article 4 is other instruction that includes, that for the grade school is, um, co-curricular activities, which are clubs that we offer. Um, we're just getting ready to start two clubs right now, Drama Club and Ukulele Club. So those are just getting started this week. Um, student and staff support, which includes several different things that I'll go over in just a minute, that's about half of the, the budget that I submit. And school administration is 9%. These are expenses, not including salaries. Okay, these are, these are all the other things. Once you start putting all the salaries in, those numbers get so big that little supply lines and various other things disappear. So, um, those salary lines, for the most part, are pretty stable. And, uh, these are the other associated costs. If you look at my last page, how am I doing on time Karen?
God.
Oh, I didn't start it. Oh, why did you even start?
I didn't.
All right, I'm going, I'm going. Um, so, all right, I'll have to cut mine back. I yield my time. So this last page basically takes that pie graph and breaks it down into some of the programs that are there. So in regular instruction, essentially, there are three programs within that. We have the preschool program where there are three classrooms, uh, there are two of which are collaborative with SKCDC. The K5 instruction line, which is the vast majority of, um, what we have. And the GT costs, which is broken out K8, um, but it's primarily K5 costs. And then Article 4, other instruction, those are the clubs. Article 5, we have improvement in, of instructions, and that's primarily math's domain now, but we do have some grade school money that's in that line that will cover our tuition reimbursement for college courses and also conference registrations for our professional development. In the past, we've used Title II money for those, but this is the first year that we've started putting money into our budget, which I think is a very good move, um, to have those costs in our budget. And so that's that. Uh, the guidance program, health, which is the school nurse, um, I'm sure you'll remember, and for anyone that doesn't, we changed our model this year. We now have an RM, um, Nurse Melissa, who is solely at the grade school, and then there's a campus nurse for the other two buildings. Library program, Mrs. Fitzgerald gets her $5,000 for books at this point. She's happy, that's all she asked for. Um, and then the, the technology department, um, primarily that has to do with, uh, software licenses. We also have, I have some money in there for hardware, and we're looking at possibly moving to some Chromebooks, which are considerably cheaper than Apple laptops for the younger grades, um, because all of those old white ones from the middle school are pretty well dead. And we also have, um, a few more of the interactive short throw projectors for a classroom. And school administration, that's the office, uh, the full-time principal, assistant principal, and two secretaries. And the supplies we need to try to keep the school running. Questions?
You might not be able to answer this, Jeff, because I know we've talked about it a little bit in our school too, but if you do some of those technology changes, does that mean you have to change out all of your airports and all the other stuff? Or can the Chromebooks use the same?
Yes.
Good.
You've got two Chromebooks this year.
Four. We have four that we're experimenting right now within second grade.
Are they going well, are they?
Um, we are, we're still trying to figure out how to get the necessary licenses so that we can use them, but they have to be licensed in order to get the NUIA browser on to try NUIA. So that's the, that, that's the sort of the, um, the, the most critical thing from the teacher's perspective is they want to be able to use the NUIA within the classroom setting because it's, it's part of their natural instruction assessment piece. So we're still waiting on that piece for those licenses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lad.
All right, I'll start.
Thank you, Josh. Winter middle school, oh, I took my hand out. While you're getting your hand out, I, I want to give a big shout out and thank you to Mr. Lad for once again pushing me to the edge of sanity, um, in learning how to use Excel. Again, more, better, deeper, darker. Now, Mike Porte. And, um, Dr. Brown, as you've mentioned, being technology director this year, I have become the webmaster, I'm sorry to say. And, uh, the fixer of all MLTI stuff. Not easy. Um, I'm in strong support of going back to technology within the buildings. Front page of your cover, I, I'm going to go through the numbers first and then do a little highlight of, of Winter Middle School. Um, did you get one?
I did.
Oh, oh, shoot. Front page of the cover, I want to give kudos to this young lady, Callie Clark, and tell you a little bit about some of the outstanding things that Winter Middle School staff do on a daily basis. This is a culmination of a project of sixth grade writing on persuasive essay. Yep, a writing project on persuasive essay. All of the sixth graders, that was their prompt to get ready for the MEA essay this year. Um, and by the way, the MEA people, in their infinite wisdom, dropped the essay. But it's okay, we're ready for it when it comes back. The sixth graders had to write a persuasive essay, and Callie decided to write about why all kids should become equestrian. The fact that horses are wonderful animals to have around and to learn and to become confident in yourself. The essay was extremely well done, and her project, her culminating project, and in great support from her parents and her trainer, brought her horse to school where she taught her class how to get all the equipment on it, get on it, and give her horse commands, both verbally and silently. So it was awesome. It was just awesome. So kudos to Mr. Blanchard's English class, sixth grade, and to Callie for thinking outside the box. Next page. Um, I also did a little bit of Winter Student Population map, but it's a little more difficult at the middle school to disseminate grade levels because, as you can see, many of the names of the teachers are not only in their content area, but across grade levels and across content areas. Very few teachers at the middle school teach only one subject or one grade level. Um, in the 21 years that I've been there, I've gone from 16 full-time core teachers to nine. Student body has gone from 279 to 187. So we've lost a hundred kids, but I've also lost a great deal of staff, even more so in the Unified Arts Department. You can see the content areas on the left, the name of the teachers who teach those subjects, and the number of classes in each content area and the average class size. A total of 65 classes taught on a weekly basis at Winter Middle School with an average class size of 19.6. I have one regular ed, ed tech, Mrs. Brunette in the library. Last page. Thank you, Mr. Lad, I learned how to do a 3D graph. It took me about four hours. And I still couldn't get the words on the graph. Couldn't do it. And then I couldn't understand why it kept changing my numbers, and it was because some of my percentages were point something, and I just rounded, well, I didn't round and equal 100. And a pie chart won't work unless everything adds up to 100%. So I finally figured that out too. Article 1, regular instruction at the middle school, those are your paper and pencils. Those are the things that you buy for teachers to use in their classroom, 44% of the budget. These are again, non-employee expenses, no salaries, no benefits. Um, Article 4 is other instruction. You see a huge increase between the middle school, uh, grade school and the middle school because of our athletics. Because of the athletics and the number of the clubs. You heard Mr. Lad talk about two clubs. In a couple of minutes, I'm going to list some of the clubs that we have and not all. And not all of them actually are, are paid for positions. People do it out of the goodness of their heart. So that's jumped to 27% at the middle school. Article 5, which is student and staff support, is 17%. That's the library. Mrs. Brunette is an ed tech 3, and she is our librarian. Guidance, Lauren McAden is the guidance counselor, and she does a bang-up job, by the way. Technology, technology is actually up a little bit, and it's because of a telephone... Something!
Uh, the district purchased the telephone system, uh, maybe three years ago before I came, and we are still paying off that, the bond for that.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. And the nurse. And, and I do want to talk a little bit about the nurse. As Mr. Lad said, we changed our model last year, and instead of having one district nurse and, uh, three ed tech health aides, we went to two full-time nurses in the district. And I was very skeptical. I thought it would work, but I was still skeptical. Can we have a nurse who would actually be able to run back and forth between the high school and the middle school and really meet the needs of our kids? And the answer is yes. Yes. Nurse Jeanne does such a great job. And does she travel back and forth on a daily basis numerous times? Yes, she does. Yes, she does. She's called quite frequently. Someone gets, you know, hit with a bad mitten racket in gym, and we've got to check for a concussion, she comes up. Somebody does something at the high school, she goes down. Remember, middle school's the highest school here. I always want to point that out. We are the top of the hill, king of the hill, right there. Um, Nurse Jeanne does do a good job. Sometimes you have to think outside the box, rearrange what is currently in place to look for efficiencies, to look for what's going to work for the district. This is an example of how Dr. Brown led us into changing a model, and it works. So we always have to think about that. And of course, professional development, which is again, Mr. Shays, um, mainly with at this point, but we do put money in there for teachers who are, uh, in master's programs or beyond, and for professional development. Article 7 is school administration, 12% of our budget. Again, these are only the numbers that I'm in control of, what I put into the budget that I present to Dr. Brown. I was talking just a couple of minutes about the middle school, which I am so proud of. Um, just to go back a few years, let's see, about 50. Um, I graduated from Winter High School in 1977, and I moved far away, Sanford, for a few years, and I, I came back to Roost. I'm actually a resident of Wayne at this point, but I consider myself a rambler, uh, first and foremost, and forever. Very, very proud to be a Winter employee. Taught at the grade school, middle school assistant principal, high school, high school principal, middle school principal, adult ed director for one big ed year. Um, you know, I've, I've tried a lot of things in the district, and I've enjoyed everything, but what I like best is middle school. Middle school kids, they're great. We have a yearbook club, a student council, a civil rights team, a guitar club with Mr. Blanchard started this year for sixth grade, which plans on expanding to seventh and eighth. And of course, Mr. Stoneton will talk about our athletics, which I can't say enough about the sport in the town for athletics here. In reading, almost all my teachers teach a reading class, and this year we have focused on nonfiction to try to increase, uh, comprehension on the MEA tests and on NUIAs. We focus on nonfiction. Writing, again, we did the prep for the MEA essay. Guest speakers we've had this year, all the time, we're looking for freebies, and we do past students. Kevin Mullin came in, who is a past recent graduate, to do animation.
Am I over my time?
Animation, and it was really, really great. Jason Cody to do snow shoeing. And the DOE, uh, VPA specialist will be coming in to visit with us. And the clip, I believe, you showed, Dr. Brown from the girls' game, was also created by a Winter graduate, Adam Provanta. So I think we need to always showcase the kids who have gone on and become spectacular human beings, myself included. Hey. She said showcase it, I'm showcasing it. That's it. If you have any questions, let me know.
I just want to know, follow along the civil rights team and who runs it?
Ms. McHatten runs it. It's very engaged, and this is her second year. The first year was a pilot, second year being an actual team, and I believe they're going to the state conference this year. They're raising money now, as long as they can raise enough money.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all right, I'll go to one though. Well, it's not a leak.
Thanks.
Do you want to hand out my actives?
I will.
Also, I'd like to... So, you'll see that the high school administration doesn't have any fancy artwork. All about numbers. The first two pages of the packet I handed out, I think you may already be in your notebook, but I just wanted to be successful easily. I cannot show you or tell you the numbers for the coming school year. I can tell you that these are the numbers that we currently have for the spring semester. And haven't been in high school for 30 some odd years. The numbers generally do not fluctuate much. I will tell you that Dr. Brown spoke about AR, and those numbers are up. Music also is seeing an increase in numbers as well as the number of students seeking classes from Mr. McHatten. So, if you have any questions, if you look those over, I certainly will entertain calls at my office. Or visit. So, when we get right down to the numbers, which is the last page, the process at the high school, the process that I've used since I became a principal, I just send out a sheet and ask teachers to submit some requests for their supplies, their equipment, and generally if they have a good rationale for what they need or what they're asking for, I generally slide it right along to the superintendent. And if you look right at the first line under supplies, the total increase for the high school, they're asking for a little $1,400, which is less than one-half of 1% increase from the previous year. So, they are fiscally responsible teachers. And somehow, I don't understand, because as you look at individual teachers, and you have that long spreadsheet that we put together at the high school, some of the teachers are way up, some of the teachers are way down. I don't know how that works out, but it always seems to work out, so the overall increase is generally minimal. The equipment line is up. I made it clear to teachers that it's important to keep your equipment in good running order. If you've got old equipment, we ought to be looking to replace it. So, we have some major expenses that have increased because of replacing equipment. The music area is up significantly as well. If you look at his guitar classes between the two, I believe there's 38 students. So, thankfully, a lot of the students have access to guitars. We're going to purchase a few so that he has them there. And I'm going to put my glasses on, see what the next line is. Oh, textbooks, that is down significantly. Simply because we are in the process of working with Mr. Shea to look at our curriculums. And that number right there is a number that would encompass six years of lease of textbooks, generally. And it's generally cheaper to rent textbooks over six years versus one year at a time. But at school, we do not want to put ourselves in a position where we're committed to textbooks for six years if come the end of next year, the math curriculum changes enough so that they want different textbooks. So, we, I put it in, again, this year for just one more year of services. That's why that number's down significantly. Under student staff support, I think Jeff addressed that, changes in title, too. We now are putting that in the local line. That it covers the tuition and conferences that teachers wish to go to or courses they want to take. The next line, it shows only $190, but I really wanted to make the school community aware that at the high school, that $190 is the difference between administering the NOEA at grade nine and the PSAT at grade nine. We would like to have the PSAT data for three consecutive years so that we can watch the growth over time and then make adjustments to our curriculum as we need to. So, that would be more awareness for you folks. Under article seven, administration, copias, I mean, that's an increase due to our contract. That's maintenance, service, supplies, ARs. Telephone, I believe the superintendent already explained that, that was a reallocation over the actual schools of that contract that we're under for, I think it's this year and two more years? And then the supplies under administration, one of the things that I would like to do next year, when we get together as a staff, is to talk about what we would like to do as a book study. So, that $875 will provide books for our teachers so that we can sit and talk about educational topics.
Could you share just briefly the survey that you did, kids, about what classes they'd like to see?
Sure. Yes, I did send out a survey, and I really, because of the numbers in our electives, was just wondering if there were other interests the students might have. Some of the top responses were actually SAT prep, both in math and ELA, coding, students wanting to do some computer programming. I learned something today, by the way. The gentleman from Sierra Communication was in there, and we, Amanda and I were talking about coding, what we were offering, because there was like 25 students that wanted it. And we were talking languages, this young kid had no idea really what it was, and he said the newest one now is Python. So, I said, "I'm not touching it because that sounds too much like a snake." So, other things we're looking at, meteorology, there was a strong interest in meteorology, strong interest in sociology, more dual enrollment classes. What else? What else? What else? Can't remember. Sorry, boss. But what we're trying to do now is put together course descriptions so that we can get those into our course description booklet, because hopefully, next week, next Thursday during advisory, we are going to begin the registration process for new courses or classes for next year.
So, we do have staff that are qualified to teach those additional courses?
Yes, yes. If we don't, then, and I can't, sign language is one that had a few students interested in, and even though it wouldn't be enough for us to offer it here, I will be looking to talk to KPCC because I do know that they offer that as a class, and if the students are strongly interested in it, I want to make sure they're aware that they could get at it at KPCC, that they have to go up there.
I have a follow-up. This year, I know a lot more kids online classes. Do you have a sense of how many kids are enrolled in online classes right now?
The number dropped off significantly from the fall to the spring, and part of that was lack of education, though my part had to make students aware that, you know, they should really be looking at a second gen ed class. The fall, we had about 20 students taking courses such as college composition, accounting. We had one student doing a computer science class. But again, that was kind of my fault, I dropped the ball in December and didn't get it out, so we get students enrolled. What we're hoping to do is increase the dual enrollment classes that we offer great in the building. The security of having a teacher there is so great. I mean, some of the students struggled with, you know, the communication through Blackboard, and, you know, so if we can give more of those, especially the English, because, you know, we're going to force the kids to take English. So, if we can offer them their high school English credit and a college English credit at the same time, that would be awesome. UMA is looking to work with us for US history, that's required by the state, so if we can give them a high school history credit and a free UMA credit. It's exciting.
I know Mr. Schaller came in at a presentation on Latin. Was there interest in that? Is that Latin one, one of the ones that's being offered at this point, or is, what is this?
So, the number of students who showed interest in the survey was nine, and of the nine, three of them were currently enrolled in Latin. In fact, they'll be going to, one of them will be going to AP Latin, and two of them will be going to Latin III. So, there were only six.
Okay. Okay. Question. Thank you very much. Thank you. Great. Lori, special ed.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I just usually bring my facts in three years, and so that's what the first page is. Currently, we have 100 special education students. We also have homeschool students that reserve. We're down about five from this time last year. We're 11.6% of the totals, that's supposed to be total special education, no, I'm sorry, total school population. And Connie and I were talking about this yesterday, the state's at 17, so we're quite below the state, but being below 15%, we get to maximize the amount of money we receive from the state, which is really good. We serve children with nine different disability types. We have eight special education teachers. If you remember, we had nine last year, and Beth Soloy's retired, and we didn't replace her. We currently have 28 educational technicians. We have one vacant spot that we haven't had to hire this year, we've been fine without it. We have seven specialists, which are our OT, PP, speech, our school psychologist, and we have a consulting BCBA at this time.
Which is the BCBA?
It's Gretchen Shanklin.
And what is the?
Oh, a BCBA. It's a board-certified behavior analysis, and they come in and do like functional assessments on kids to look at where we really need to focus our target behaviors. So, it's a big thing right now in Maine. We really use it a lot for, regarding Ronald, Gretchen Jefferson, we have, she comes up once a month, which is very good. We currently have four resource rooms. We have two at the grade school, one at the middle school, and one at the high school. And we have three self-contained classrooms, one at the grade school, one at the middle school, and one at the high school. And we have children going to three separate special educations, special purpose private schools. We are actually down in our tuition this year over past years, and I take the majority of the money out of my local entitlement budget, so we've not had to tap into that money as much as we have in the past. We're serving 10 CDS students, providing speech services, and we're able to bill, so that's bringing in our revenue. And Kim Feeney, our speech pathologist, is doing that, she does all the billing, and it really is bringing in some nice revenue for the district, but it's also serving the kids who really need the services and weren't really receiving it through CDS, so it's been a really nice thing we've been able to do and has been encouraged by the state. And right now, I know of 12 incoming CDS students into kindergarten for child development center, our services. And I think we have eight graduates, but I'm not 100% sure on that, and we haven't done all the spring IUPs to make sure that's all happening, so, but I believe it's about that. Oh, and I did want to point out that of our 100 special education students, we have three disability groups that are the highest. Learning disability, which most people would expect that, speech and language, but our equally high is autism. We have a really large group of students with autism. 23% of our body is, are students with autism.
How many kids do we have, do you know, in our self-contained programs?
About 27 or 28. It's high. We have leaving kids. When I really added up the number between autism, intellectual disability, and multiple disabilities, it's 40% of our population, so our needs are pretty, you know, for a district. Our number is low, but our needs are high for the kids that we serve. You know, and I think our numbers are low because we do a lot of really good things, and we're really now particularly in the grade school deals and the RDI response to interventions, kind of catching kids earlier, so we don't have as many referrals as maybe your school has. We really don't have a lot because we rarely catch kids and do those interventions, which is really nice.
Can you help explain to me the children that come in under the category of child development services? You're expecting 12 incoming, are those our younger?
Yes, those are kiddos that are four-year-olds right now who have been identified as special ed through the CDS system. CDS is birth to five or four, so when those kids are transitioning in, usually around the first of December, I get their files to tell me who the children are, what their disabilities are, what kind of supports they need. There is a category in there of children that are born from July 1st to October 15th called 676, that we make a determination whether they come into kindergarten or they remain under the CDS system. So, we have a couple of those in there. I don't know where the parents, we usually don't believe in the parent on that as to whether they want an extra year or not, so I'm not sure at this point where those kiddos are.
So, this is the state really pushing their prior commitment to this age group?
Yep. And so, what happens is if you have a child who's in a special purpose private school setting, Margaret Murphy, and they're there, you have to look to see if you have a program for them here or whether you need to keep them at Margaret Murphy, whether the state places them. So, we have transition meetings in the spring to make those determinations.
You may not know the answer off the top of your head on this, but what is the, where is the state with moving three-year-old programs?
They are probably three to five years behind right now. Right now, they have a committee, and actually, Kim Feeney, who's one of the speech pathologists, is on that committee, and they haven't studied them to see the facts because of all the issues that are associated with that. So, every time they do this now, they have to do the study, you know, then they can get the study. Every time they do that, it's pushing it out farther. So, I think the soonest we would see it is three years. But, the problem is that CDS doesn't have all the services for the kids, or kids aren't getting those, you know, services that they need. So, that's why if we have extra speech services, we offer them, they pay us those.
Nice. Where are we going to house the additional 12 CDS students?
Well, we have kids who graduate, and these kids come into kindergarten. A lot of these kids are speech students. A couple of them will go to the growing tree, which is a self-contained program, so...
So, that's not a problem?
No, they come right into our kindergarten services, and we, and then, you know, they all kind of bump up into high school and then out through graduation or aging out. So, we do have one for that. So, on the second page, I have for this coming budget, maintain the current level of Medicaid seed, you know, the kids that we have in the other district placements who bill, they bill for Main Care, we have to pay that matching grant part of the Medicaid. I don't know if you know about this, Susan?
No.
But Medicaid is kind of like a matching grant. There's the federal government share and the state share, and we have to pay the state share. It's called seed. You have to seed that amount to get the federal amount. So, kiddos that go to special purpose private schools, I'm kind of picking on Margaret Murphy, but they bill a lot for Main Care. They get Main Care, we have to pay that state share. It isn't all covered by the state. So, we have to have money in our budget to cover that. So, so we're keeping the main seed the same, our legal fees are the same. Program support is kind of for the unexpected stuff because we know people move in, people move out, and we sometimes have some expenses that can be, you know, very costly. Special Olympics, we're keeping that, and right now, the kids actually just started swimming. So, reductions, as Dr. Brown had spoken of, three educational technicians, one is vacant at the time being. We don't have a retirement payout this year, so we didn't have to put that in the budget. Special Olympics, we're keeping that. And right now, the kids actually just started swimming. So, reductions, as Dr. Brown had spoken of, three educational technicians. One is vacant at the time being. We don't have a retirement payout this year, so we didn't have to put that in the budget. I was able to take twenty-five thousand dollars that was in the regular budget and move it towards local entitlement. Because I didn't have so much this year and we have carryover, I think we can cover that in local entitlement. We'll have a good carryover for that. And then, summer services, we were down a little bit, so I reduced that also. And I also wanted you to know that so far this year, our Medicaid reimbursement for the services we are providing here, our OT, PT, speech, and then the, the one-on-one ed techs that some of the kids have is around seventy-nine thousand at this time. So, that's the revenue we are bringing in.
I, I didn't hear perfectly well when we were discussing. I know our percentage of special ed students is about eleven percent and the state's is about seventeen percent. But you said something about funding at fifteen percent.
Yep, so up to fifteen percent, if you have, so we are at eleven point whatever. So, up to fifteen percent, they fund at one level. So, best way I can explain it is if we get a per pupil amount of ten thousand dollars, up to fifteen percent for every special education student, we get an extra one point five. So, we would get twenty-five thousand dollars for any child up to fifteen percent. When I was in my other district, we were like at seventeen percent. We went over that fifteen. So, from fifteen to seventeen, you got a much lower amount. It was like point three six for those additional students over fifteen percent. So, the more you're around or under fifteen, you maximize your special education dollars than if you go over that fifteen percent. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
All right. Josh? Who's timing, Josh?
Okay. So, adult ed. We have about twenty students in any given year. It goes up and down a little bit. The students graduate whenever they finish sometimes from high set. But among those students, we have college students that are struggling with math. We have recent high school dropouts. We have forty-eight six-year-old English language learner, seventeen-year-old homeschooled student, six-year-old high school dropout. We have folks who high school didn't work for, and we have those returning to college. All of them are either in the process of improving their circumstance or just looking to improve their circumstance. So, we have a good group in there. We have myself, an administrative assistant, and four part-time teachers. We get about thirteen hundred hours of instruction over the course of two semesters. I would be lying if I said that's all that our teachers did for their students. And we also do enrichment, which, I'm going to pull out my phone now, only because I want to pull up the calendar on the website and tell you what's happening today, or this week. And that is, this Monday, we had a memoir workshop, people learning to write a memoir. We had, there was a martial arts, United Fitness and Martial Arts is working with us, did a lunchtime yoga. We also had yoga yesterday evening here. The intro to our conservation burial is happening. Thanks for collecting a little money for us over in middle school. We have beginner crochet happening in the office right now. And there's also square gates. So, those are the things. This, this semester has been really good. You can see the graph that I put on there. We have twenty-seven new offerings out of about forty-five offerings overall. And this graph compares last year to this year. And so, as you can see, we went from fifty-six registrations in January to a hundred and forty. So, really well, I have to give a lot of credit to our administrative assistant, Takiya, who's come in, who's been a big part of doing a lot of our outreach. It's been, it's been wonderful. And I think the importance of that is that the enrichment is our visibility piece. And it leads to more students, more people thinking and knowing that there's an adult ed office that they can come into. And that they can, yeah, I'm looking to go back to school, I need to prep for the Accuplacer. I dropped out of high school a long time ago, I can't do construction anymore. The more visible we are through doing our enrichment, the better we do at bringing students in for the other educational services. So, so it's been really successful this semester, really happy again. You meet Takiya, she's been wonderful, I can't say enough good things about her. Much like, but it's a budget, so that's adult ed, I just wanted to do a quick overview. It's a budget, much like nutrition, we have to, we, our budget's based on what we can bring in for revenue. Local money, state subsidy, there's state grant and a federal grant. Those are the four major sources for us. We do have some miscellaneous things. We can make a little bit of money on enrichment, but really, that has not been more than a couple thousand dollars up to now. So, the budget that we have, we're requesting the fifty-five thousand dollar contribution from the town that we have had for the last two years. This'll be the third year. That's not an interest. However, we did see an Afla grant, which is a federal grant that funds adult education, decrease about twelve, twelve hundred dollars this year, and it will be the same amount decreased next year. It's a two-year cycle for those grants, so we've lost a little revenue there. The good news that we found out this weekend is the state subsidy that they have sent a letter to us is about eight thousand more than what we received this year. There's two reasons for that. One is we're, we're reimbursed. Our, our subsidy is based on a reimbursement. So, two years ago, when the town agreed to up the amount of money they provided to adult ed, from, I think, twenty-five to fifty-five, that raises the ceiling of subsidy that we can get. So, that's a big deal. So, that's the first reason. And then, the second reason is allocating the money in the right places to get the best kind of reimbursement. So, some things are reimbursed at seventy percent, other things are reimbursed at fifty percent. So, we've done some good work. Amanda Voice has been very helpful to me in helping us to get that in a good place. And so, we were able to get that up. And I put the Afla piece in there twice, apparently that was really important to me. So, what does that mean? I'll tell you about the numbers in a minute. But the expenses, we have not funded our own brochure for the last two years that I've been here. It has been funded by a private donation to be able to do that. It runs about forty-five hundred dollars. And there's been someone who's been willing to do that. We should be able to do that at this point next year if that's in our budget without that donation. So, maybe they'll still give us the forty-five hundred for something else, we never know. Professional development, paying our staff to come in for time together, to work on projects together, to better provide services for our students, to collaborate, to go to some of the adult education conferences to maintain their certificates. And those things, we have not had a lot of money in for that. There's about a thousand dollars added in there. Additional funds for books and equipment is really where it comes to. And the biggest increase, but this is actually not solely from that eight thousand dollars, but also from kind of moving and shifting, is with that increase, you know, from fifty-six to a hundred and forty in registrations, we obviously get a lot more business and interaction in the office with people, phone, email. And so, giving a few more hours a week to our administrative assistant. She's at fifteen, she's at nineteen. So, that is the budget for adult ed. Any questions? Am I in time? Did somebody?
Josh, ending the budget in nineteen was the first year it was in the black for...
Yes. This'll be the second year.
For ever.
Josh gets high praise.
Thank you.
Goodness to you for that. Do you advertise our services to our, our community, especially the high set and the CCA, DAB? Any other way other than?
Other than the brochure?
Other than the brochure?
So, one of the things that's been pretty successful this year, if you don't follow us on Facebook, do so. Takiya has been much more active with our social media presence. And in the event that, well, in the, in the next year, we might see some improved. You can do a lot of work with that, that she's identified. We have traditionally just done the brochure. It's mailed to about twelve thousand homes directly in the area. So, it's a lot. That's why they post it just so much, but we get a special. So, that is the primary way. Website has also been updated. We pay dues through the Maine Educational, Adult Education Association. They host websites that are semi-standard across the state. We also search courses across the state from there, from our site. And Takiya's done quite a bit of work on that. And if you haven't been there recently, take a look at it, it's a lot nicer. It's really easy to find information. And we do targeted emails. We've started keeping an email list, contact list. And I suspect we may at some point do something, if anybody's ever heard of MailChimp or Constant Contact, we're using those, and kind of working on that. So, we have a working list to, to do that kind of advertising. So, we have tried to send some things to the community advertiser and other places. They're kind of hit or miss sometimes on whether they make it in.
No, I, I don't know what that population of folks for whom public school is not the answer. I, I don't know how they necessarily communicate. I think Facebook is one of the things, but people say that Facebook for that age group is, is gone and now they're just instant messaging or something else.
Yeah. I would, I mean, I think looking ahead, Takiya and I have talked a lot about social media, about texting, about keeping, there are lots of students who come in and then don't come back. And so, they're still out there. So, so there's lots of strategies, I think, that we're, we're trying to set up so that it'd be easy for us regularly to be reaching out and kind of prompting people and say, hey, come on back.
Yeah.
And, and Takiya lives right here in Winter, so, and she's very committed to this work. And so, I think that will be a benefit to us to hear word about.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions for Josh?
Okay.
All right, cool. Yeah?
Yep.
Could be an instruction.
So, this one, I have any handouts because it's very short. Being a new physician, I want to explain how my position is funded a little bit. And then, the two, basically, two lines that I'm asking for, which is an addition. My position is funded three ways, partially locally, partially through the RSC, the collaborative that we have with RSC II in Maranica, because I am also the professional development director for the RSC. So, I can, we can get billed that way, and I get paid through some Title II funds. So, it's not just all local funds, it's split three different ways. So, one of the things that we've really looked for this year is the need for time for teachers to get together. So, my two lines are based on that. So, one is some additional sub-money to get about a hundred sessions of teachers together. So, that's the forty-two hundred and fifty dollars there. It gets about fifty days, so we can split up half-day, so we can get some teachers together in the morning, then a different set of teachers in the afternoon and still use the same subs. The other part is two days of training for some elementary teachers to work on reading next year. That will be done over two days in late August before school starts. So, that will be paying the teachers to come in and do that. And my eight minutes is up, that's all I got.
So, I'm going to ask you two questions. The same question, but about two different topics.
Yep.
How's the health of Title II? Where, where do we think that that's going to be?
Title II, for the last three years, has come in right around the same amount, about thirty-five thousand on average. I haven't heard anything about a big increase or a decrease on that. So, I'm, I'm thinking that and Title I is pretty stable. As we talked about one of the last meetings, the Title V money is, is gone. That was about eleven thousand dollars that we got last year that Winter no longer gets.
Right. And then, the RSC with, with our new governor?
Yep.
What do we think about the longevity of that?
We've heard rumors, but we know it's going on for at least one more year. After that, I would say Dr. Brown, unknown at this point.
You still feel that way? Uh, yeah. But we do know it's going to be good for this coming year.
Yeah. The twenty-twenty-one year is, is in.
Solid.
It's in the supplemental budget, I think it's pretty solid. It's the biennial that's wobbly here after that.
Yep.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mac.
I don't know if any of you have ever gone to the grocery store to buy food for your family for dinner and discovered that buying chicken breasts, broccoli, and sweet potato is a lot more expensive than buying a box of macaroni and cheese.
Yes.
And that's the struggle.
Thank you.
So, we're trying to get our kids to be eating more healthy food. I have a few extra boxes here for my mom's. And it's now always the least expensive choice. What I've been doing is examining every way that we can get money from the state and spending it wisely for next year because in February, you have to spend it for the next school year. So, that's one of the things I've been working on is taking full advantage of everything that the state has to offer, whether it's commodity foods or transferring your food to manufacturers to, for them to make manufactured food or getting fresh fruits and vegetables from the Department of Defense, which is where I want to go. What we've been doing this year is we've been training our grade schoolers to eat more fresh fruit. They're greeted with fresh fruit when they walk in the door, but we have not had that much luck with the middle school, middle schoolers and high schoolers. They are still not quite there. But I see this program going forward and taking a few years before it really gets that way. But that means it's going to get more expensive as time goes on. I just want to bring that up right now. My first document is the changes I've made to the budget. Most of them are just shifting numbers around. We do have aging equipment everywhere. Nothing is new. The only one piece of equipment that we have that was new did break this year and was repaired under warranty. But everything else is, you know, we had a dish machine and an oven and a warmer, all breaking the same week. And those things are always in the thousands of dollars when it comes to repairs. I've put money into different areas. We didn't have a budget at all for things like if a food manager's printer breaks, there's no place for that to go. So, I have a line for office supplies for next year for that type of thing. The managers turn in the bottles that they collect in the cafeteria. If they need pens, they, they turn in the bottles to buy pens. So, we're going to let them buy their office supplies. So, this is all pretty straightforward. I don't, again, like everyone else, I don't have any labor in there. Labor's pretty much out of our control. We're cut to as, as slim a staff as we possibly could be cut. And I've still managed to cut about seventeen thousand dollars out of the budget. To talk about where we've been going over the last five years, the five-year enrollment in free and reduce report, we are down thirteen percent since the sixteen-seventeen school year. We were at forty-three, almost forty-four percent of students eligible for free or reduced, down to just under thirty-one this year. And that's a pretty significant number when you come to what the state is going to reimburse us. And that affects a lot of other areas as well. When you get up towards fifty percent, you're qualifying for more and more programs. But we're down to thirty percent. Now, part of that is because the, the level was changed. So, last year, we were thirty-four, and this year, we're thirty. That might not be because people are making more money. It might be because they changed the threshold of where free and reduce is, where it qualifies. So, it, it could not, I mean, you'd like to say, well, forty-three percent of the community was doing more poorly at that time than they are now. I'd like to think the community is doing better when only thirty percent qualifies. Another thing that affects that is not everyone who would qualify will fill out an application for free and reduced-priced lunches. We've tried to get, all of the secretaries in all of the buildings have tried to track and make sure that we get an application from every single family, but some families simply refuse to fill it out. So, that would certainly benefit us and the students if everyone filled one out. The next page is the five-year month... The next page is the five-year monthly federal reimbursement. You'll also see these numbers dropping from, well, 241, 265, 234, 226. And this year, of course, is incomplete, but when you go month to month, you'll see some of our months are better and some of them are not, you know, not as high reimbursement. This also is affected by how many student days. Each calendar year is slightly different, how many days that you have of school in September versus October, so that's why it varies quite a bit from month to month. The months where there's fewer days, like February, the numbers are always way down. And in the last page, I've projected how much our reimbursement is going to be for the next few months, based on student days and what we've been doing so far this year. I think, you know, Connie mentioned that she's asking for more money. One of the things that we've talked about several times recently is unpaid balances, and we are over $6,000 at this point in unpaid balances. And that's really nowhere in the budget, but the money has to come from somewhere. So, and you know, whether it's something that the state decides to do sometime in the future to help school districts, you know, we have no recourse if someone decides not to pay their students' bills. And we have many families that owe $300, $400, or $500 just for school lunch, so that's something that we have to take into consideration as well.
Can you talk a little bit about how the law changed from last year to this year, and why that balance may have gone? Last year, it was about $3,000 district-wide, end of the year, and now we're about, well, 70%, and we're at 6,000. But that was a legislative action.
There's nothing you can do. You cannot say to the child, you have a negative balance. You cannot give them an alternate meal. You cannot identify them in any way, shape, or form. The only thing you can do, and this is only middle school and high school, is if a child chooses to buy snacks that are not part of the free or reduced-priced lunch, and they have a negative balance, the cashier can say, you don't have enough money in your account to buy snacks. So those students may go to their parents and say, hey, Mom, I couldn't get a bag of chips today because I don't have any money in my account. Can you put money in my account? So we're seeing, the high school has maybe only eight students that are in negative, and the middle school, maybe 15. The bulk of them are at the grade school. I think more than $4,000 of the 6,000 is at the grade school, and that's where we don't sell snacks to the kids, and the kids, you know, are not able to purchase anything. So previous years, schools did things like, they said to the kid, hey, tell your mom to bring in money tomorrow. You don't have any more money in your account, thus embarrassing the child. Or they said, no, you can't have that food, you know, put that back, or throw that away, you don't have any money. Or they said, oh, you get a cheese sandwich today. Now, I agree with this legislation, that children should not be shamed because their parents have not paid for their lunches, but it's put the cities and towns in a hard place because you really can't do anything. We send letters home. Every other week, we send letters home, and we usually don't get any response whatsoever. So that, you know, and that's a big chunk of time, just, you know, getting these letters printed out, getting them sent to the parents without really a whole lot of return for that. So I think that's the main difference. I think people, I'm really surprised that people knew so quickly that they didn't really have to pay, that nothing would happen for them if they didn't pay. And I mean, how would that be in any other part of society? If you found out, if you went into Dunkin' Donuts and grabbed a coffee and left, and they wouldn't call the police, you know, how many people would just do it? So that's what we're up against. Does anyone have any questions?
No. I will mention for Andy, because I know the question will come up, so you'll know the answer ahead of time, maybe, a little bit, and possibly for Barbara, depending on March 3rd. But Kristen, Dr. Brown, and I went in to see Shana Bellows about the results, the unintended consequences of the food chain bill, knowing that our numbers of folks that haven't paid their bill was just increasing. And we, at the MSMA conference, talking to other school committee members from other towns, know that they were having the same problem that we, it's pretty universal right now in the state of Maine, that there's a lot of, lot of increased unpaid nutrition bills out there. And so schools and towns are trying to talk about how they can, what they can do, because they sort of have us over a log on this one. So I have to say that in my humble opinion, that all the time that we spent, follow-up emails and so on and so forth, was all useless time with Shana Bellows. None of us, as far as I know, ever heard anything back from our efforts. I didn't. No. No, I didn't. I didn't follow up note and email and said our numbers are going up, and didn't even get anything back from email, given that she had received it, so. So if you go on the website for the National Food, the SMP program, they have some suggestions, all of which you've already done. And then when you get down to the bottom of the suggestions, the ones that are left are to take these parents to small claims court, or, what was the last one? Small claims court.
Preventing them from registering a vehicle in the town.
Well, that's, that's not on their list, but that's what some towns are thinking Going after the parents and not shaming the students, so I will, I support it.
One thing I forgot about the legislation is, one thing schools used to do also is tell seniors they couldn't march until their cafeteria bill had been paid. And there's one slight thing that they can do. If the student owes, you know, library fees, or computer fees, or sports fees, or whatever, they can say, you owe $500, and that can include school nutrition, and you can't march on graduation without paying this bill, but you can't single out school nutrition. You can only put it in as a, as a bulk, as part of it.
And indeed, our school system has a policy that says that we can keep them from marching. But does Withrop want to be the first school system on the front page of the KJ that says that we've forbidden a kid to march, a senior to march, or that we've taken the family to small claims court? So we really feel as though we have nowhere to go. So we're going. I know it'll come up. I know it'll be asked about, and we have seen our legislature legislate for about it. And I think you even talked to...
Yes. I talked to Craig Hickman about it.
Craig Hickman about it, too.
And one of the perspectives and consequences of our increased minimum wage is that some of our families that were qualified for pre-lunch now, because of an increase in minimum wage, now are in the reduced lunch qualification category. So they've increased slightly in their income, but now it's disqualified them from this federal program because the federal limits are not keeping up with the minimum wage. So that, of course, is an unintended consequence that we're seeing here, because many of these families might not be that they're just, oh, we don't, we don't have to pay our bill. It's that now it's an expense that they didn't have before that they're not able to pay, because the categories in Maine, it's boosted them here, but the federal category, the limit is, they're still, they're not qualifying any time. So he, Mr. Hickman was going to be looking into contacting our federal representatives and getting some movement there, but of course, you know, that, it takes a long time for that to happen, so we won't see any changes if, if ever, but we won't see anything here.
All right. Erin, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see. John. That works.
Before we get started, just wanted to share with you folks, I got, I think I have maybe two extras on the table. This is riveting stuff. Wanted to let everybody know, I shared with A-Team and Dr. Brown yesterday that Camden National Bank bought a bunch of tickets for our student sections to attend meetings. So that was really cool. Should we do a little plug right now? Camden National. Why not? Anyways, we had about 300 tickets go on today, and about 100 of them were free for the students, so that was really cool. They also offered to do a fan bus. We decided not to do that because it was so close. Most of the students said that they would just get a ride in there, so just wanted to start on a positive note. Not that this is all negative. Most, once, once Dr. Brown and I had talked, and we were going to make some reductions, most of the reductions that you'll see here that were decided were either clubs or something that was not already functioning, I guess, for the lack of a better term, or was being used as a resource. If you start with line seven, this is just how I did it last year, just kind of rundown through it. Co-curricular stipends, we removed outing club and math club. I want you to, let you all some know that this was done with conversations with the principals. These are, math club, I think, has been three-plus years that we haven't had anybody step up and want to be an advisor, so we removed that.
Is that why?
No, line seven would be middle school, sorry. Outing club is also something that we haven't run in two years. We increased supplies to co-curricular at the middle school to help with yearbooks specifically, as well as drama, to help with the license, the purchasing fee. Because of removing the two above programs of math and outing on line 22, we were able to reduce our transportation line by $2,200. Coaching stipends, the increase here is due to experience, as well as that we've put the site coordinators also onto this line. It was coming from co-curricular, just thought it was more accurate to show that it's really covering athletes. So that's, that's really the big increase, because those are $3,000 stipends, $3,000 stipends. The officials, that's something that's really kind of out of our control, that's something that goes up, that's negotiated through the NPA, and yes, that does affect the middle school rate as well. We also have clinicals now, which has our trainer that stops by twice a week at the high school, now stops at the middle school when requested. That was a $500 fee, so pretty minimal for what you get. Supplies, this was increased, the uniforms, as well as on line 39, which is equipment, I'll kind of go through this twice if I need to. Line 38, 39 are supplies and equipment lines. The supply line itself is what we would call consumable. That didn't match the high school. So basically, we have about $4,900 in uniforms for two teams next year, but there's also an increase of another $300 or $400, because we put that on the correct line to match the high school. So if you look through the budget that I presented, or that you have in your booklets, you'll see that there's really about a $9,000 swing from one side to the other, and that's just because the regular consumables are just listed somewhere else. So if you were to combine those lines, the increase is quite minimal. Due to fees, excuse me, that's something, again, that we don't have control over. You might ask what a designer is. Those are the folks that take our schedules and assign the referees. That's, again, something that is not negotiated by the school, but is a statewide fee. Co-curricular stipends at the high school. French club was removed. Haven't run that in two or three years also. That was savings of $949. Line 57, I'll refer to this later. The reason this is a $5,200 decrease is because this line was spread out with another line. There was two transportation lines in co-curricular. We combined that to one, and you'll see the increase later from that combined, and I'll refer to this again. It's actually line 60. If you want to jump ahead a little bit, you'll see that's a $1,900 increase. That's simply just moving one set of money to another. Line 58, this is a decrease just due to the needs requested by our co-curricular clubs. As you may remember from last year, we didn't even have a supply line for our co-curricular. We did this year, so we were able to get some things to those clubs, and from that, we don't have, as a bigger need next year. The increase of $340, again, is dues. Those are decided by conferences, organizations, however that may work. Line 60, again, as I referred to, is a proper placement of transportation. That was a $1,900 increase. What was there before was $3,000, and then when we moved this down, it was $4,900. There was a decrease there, but also an increase from moving it from one line to another. Does that make sense while I'm right here? Just, okay. So basically, it's just moving one line into one. Line 63, this is an increase of $7,300. About $3,500 of it is because we have a JV softball position, as well as a varsity club position. The JV softball position was not there for the last two years, because we've had a volunteer there that was certified, but didn't feel comfortable taking the stipend, because they were not able to be there at all events. They were at games and so forth. That is not the case, so we will have to advertise for that next, next year. And in the scale, we're just in a, we're in a position where there's about 10 people that have not reached the top end, so they have all received a $65 or $75 increase across the board, as well as the base salary went up in the contract. So when you run the numbers from this year to last year, you'll see some stipends have gone up between $200 and $400, and that adds up quite quickly when you have below 15 coaches. So that's, that's basically where that's at. The equipment repair line, line 74, that's regular operating cost for things that need to be reconditioned, plus a $500 increase. This is a pump for the water train. It's a boost. We have water trains now from all of our athletic fields. Some of them, the water lines don't have enough pressure to reach the whole field. Field hockey is a great example of that, but we were able to purchase something from the company. Should this pass, then it will boost the pressure, which will allow it to reach all areas of the field. Line 75, the officials, again, this is the rate, this is across all sports. If you think about what we offer to come into just under $1,000 for an increase for all those sports, it's really not a bad deal. Decreasing supplies by $1,000. The reason that we had a kind of a rollover, a surplus, is because sports field allowed us to buy in bulk last year. We didn't have to use all of that, so we don't have to buy as much less, as much next year, as well as we hosted some playoff games that bought the paint for us, so we have some leftover from our own purchase. Moving right along to the second page, might be the backside for you guys. Line 78 for equipment. This is just regular operating cost. The reason it's up by $450 is just the price that we've been quoted for the uniforms next year in our replacement, our uniform replacement schedule. Dues went up $500 at the MVC. This is because schools that do not host track meets are now paying a $500 price on top of that, because that's what it costs to host with a timer. Everything is electronic now. That's just where we're at. And if you don't host a track meet where you do that, you are assessed an additional fee of $500 to help someone doing a second meet that you would not be able to hold. And then transportation, this is, this has gone up $3,300 for two reasons. Hockey, we've been moved to the north, which means that we're traveling a lot more, and we've also, with most of our, because most of the regionals and playoffs were in the south this year, it flips to the north next year. So we will be traveling more, but we also put a little extra in this just to make sure that we had everything covered, we were talking to Northeast. So what does all this mean? Direct operational costs, what I have direct control over is up $26,000 across the board. However, we've removed $16,000 with a $9,700 increase. The things that I don't have control over, such as mainstay retirement, workman's comp and so forth, the increase is $9,365. However, it goes down $3,300 by removing those other positions, which is $6,000, which means I'm asking for $15,000 in my small little budget for an increase. And really, most of it is cost that's out of our control, besides the two positions that we touched on. This is, this, what I feel is the least impact on students from what we run right now. As requested last year, here it is again this year. This is cost per student. Please know that it's fall and winter of this year, and obviously, spring of last year, just because I don't have those numbers yet. So this is, this is what it costs per student. Transportation officials, which also gave me the numbers for the budget. Questions?
Go ahead, Josh.
Oh, sorry. The transportation, like for the hockey team, do we share that with, like, the other schools and some that are...
No, we solely are responsible for the transportation. That's a great question, because Moran Cook is responsible, for example, the coach, the head coach, Lawrence is JV coach. Most of the ice time is raised by the parents, to be honest with you.
Yep.
So I'm going to ask this question, and I know what the answer is going to be. No, but do you, do you ever put in extra money for, I know Mrs. Chris just mentioned that Mr. Blanchard has started a guitar club that obviously is not a stipend position.
Yep.
And just something to think about, our school, the past couple of years, have, and I don't know what they call it, it's only, it's $1,500. They put it in for teachers to then apply for extra clubs or extracurricular things that students, that come up. or extracurricular things that students, that come up. Like our, that's how our sort of coding club and our robotics club started at our school. We never had one. They, a couple of guys started it, they put a stipend, they got a small stipend for the first year, and then the next year was a stipend position.
Yep.
And I just wanna say that you probably have some staff who might start some things like that, but if there's no money there, they wouldn't even ask to start it.
Right.
But if they know that they could possibly have a little bit of money this year, then maybe if it's a success, like the guitar club seems to be, it's just a shame that we're asking, once again, for all this volunteer time.
Probably agree.
And to have staff not get paid for that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't think it's a bad idea, I just, I took your question, as you've said, we are not in a position to do that. I mean, when we're removing positions already to do something like that, you know, I, I'm a, I'm a fan of, I think we should be offering, you know, incentive pay for anything, whether it's extra or co-curricular, meaning if someone wants to have an opportunity to start a club to see if there's some interest, a grassroots movement, to see if that can, you know, catch fire.
Yeah.
But you're right, we're just not in a position to do that.
Yeah.
Right, Dr. Brown?
Thanks, Joel.
Yes?
Just, real quick, so I, when I was looking through the line, can you remind me, do field maintenance, does that fall under a different article?
Uh, yes and no.
Okay.
So, for example, just the upkeep of mowing it and so forth, that comes under maintenance. But as far as like field prep for games and so forth, that defers to me. Field work, like baseball, softball fields, that's regular operational cost under like some sort of repair. I think it's under equipment repair or upkeep, I don't remember the term right off, but that's in there, and it's $3,000.
Okay, so, any major overhauling of our fields doesn't, not budgeted? So, would, would our activity fee cover things like that, or...
I think that would be a great idea. I really think that it's time to revisit the activity fee discussion, to be honest with you. Do we keep it? Are we using it? What are we gonna use it for? I think that would be a really good ad hoc committee, for the lack of a better term, but it's, I think we should have that discussion. So, or even come up with a timeline of, you know, do we wanna redo the field hockey field? For the next two years, that's what we're gonna put that towards, I don't know. We, we still have an open discussion of whether it's kept or rolled. I mean, that was...
Whether it's kept or wrapped, yeah.
Yep, so.
Right, right.
Think it's been straightened out, but I mean, it was for a long time, we weren't sure, so.
Right, absolutely, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I would recommend that we quit, but I need to go back to Mrs. Alexander. Mrs. Alexander, you had your hand up, and I forgot to come back.
Oh, did you have another comment, thought, or suggestion? I wanted to say that I would love to talk to you informally about some things flashing through my head about this nutrition lunch deficit issue. I don't think they're appropriate to make a recommendation or even suggest that they would be worthy of your consideration at this point, but I'd like to help out and think through some of those issues, yes.
Great, thank you. I think it's a good time to call it quits for the evening. What, when, in agreement with that? Could I, could I have a motion?
Move to adjourn? Second?
All in favor? Motion passes. Four through all. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming!